I'll call this meeting over. No call?
Partner, Terry.
Here.
Larry Watson, middle playoff.
Here. Ladies and legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, recognized guest. We want to thank everybody for being here today. Item number five, no business. Just done getting my business. Larry. Bobby, no business.
Clear out for the election.
Yala. Chair.
We've uh just got a little bit, got two covered store, two recovered stolen vehicles last week. Uh one's gonna be brand new shorts along with Bill Teal's kind of a operation deal. We actually got most of the equipment back from that one. Um had two pursuits, um same, same, same timeframe. One of them's gonna be a stolen vehicle out of Hughes County, um over a hundred thirty mile an hour coming through, ninety mile an hour coming through McCurton, over a hundred thirty mile an hour down Thirty One Highway. Semi truck helped us, um semi truck helped block the road and slow him down. Um had quite a bit of marijuana and prescription pills with that one. Inmate count's continuously rising. I just asked what it was this morning. Um we're still waiting on um more Chalked On inmates. We've still got Muskogee inmates. We've got, had some air conditioning issues last week. Um we've got them up and running. We're still waiting to hear back on some prices for some compressors, um for some ones that need to be done or replace the whole units. Our freezer went down while I was gone. Terry got that taken care of. They've got it, they've got it temporarily fixed. Waiting on some parts for it too. So um the heat's, I mean the heat's causing issues again with our air conditioners, but I mean that's, it's been a common thing for the last ten years, so.
Yeah.
Other than that, everything's moving along. We're still having a lot of, you know, misdemeanor thefts throughout the county that we're trying to get stuff done. We um hoping to have another federal indictment coming down pretty soon on some individuals that are falling under the McGirt issue. So um hopefully we'll get that done and that, that individual will go to Muskogee as well. One other new business item before we move on is US Sailor has asked to put a tower up um at the sheriff's office. They want to pay six hundred dollars a month um with a twenty year lease with it rising five percent each year. Um with no objections, I'm gonna sign the agreement just so they can come out. They'll have to, you sign an agreement, they'll send some people out, start surveying it, looking at it. But they wanna put it up on the um north correction, southeast corner of the lot back there. Um it's a, where that hill, where that hill is in the back, they wanna put it up there. They did a hundred by hundred section. They uh staked it off, marked it off. There's plenty of room for it. Um we'll, would actually be able to put a repeater on it right there in our office. Um I mean it could be a win-win for us both, plus it's a revenue, I mean it's not a lot of revenue, but six hundred dollars a month. Pretty good little source of revenue coming in um out there. Do you guys have any objections with us trying to move forward on that deal?
So after two, just two, I'll get the check.
You want us to have the sheriff's office? I think it should go to the general fund. I mean honestly, we, the money come back to the county. But um the question is, is do y'all have any problems with us moving forward and letting them?
I don't.
Is there plenty of run? I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. I think it can be a win-win for us all the way around. So we'll, we'll tell them to start moving forward. They said it'd be about ninety days before they get all their, make sure it's gonna work. But uh but US Sailor's asked to put a tower up right there at that area. We also uh are working on.
And they'll just be renting the, the ground. They're not purchasing it.
They're not purchasing it, just to rent, just a lease deal for the ground.
What's the term on it?
Twenty years with a, it's like a five percent each year for twenty years, five percent. Um and then we're working on clearing the lot next to the sheriff's office. Um hopefully we get some equipment out there this, in this next week or so before we do, before it gets wet again. But we're working on clearing that lot um next to the sheriff's office with our inmate work crew. Terry's volunteered to, you know, to operate the dozer to clear it. If we can just get one out there and get it cleaned up and.
Just on the west side of the.
On the west side, that, that, the city owns it, but we're tired of looking at it. We're tired of the, and we have some drainage issues through there and we've got the ability to get it cleaned up. We're gonna clean it up with the hopes that we can uh maybe eventually financially build our own garage there to do our own oil change. We, we're doing our own stuff, we haven't did it in Salapport. But do our own oil change, our tie, I mean we're doing all that right now. But we've talked to Bobby and Bobby's kind of in agreeance that, you know, we help them, he'll help us on the deal. So that's what we're hoping to do.
Clean it up, it's gonna make it worth more money.
Clean it up, we may keep a lot of that crap out. I mean there's, I mean it's, it's just a, and the other side too is, when you have, if you have, knock on wood, if you haven't escaped, ninety percent of them, that's where the first thing they goes to them. So if we have that cleaned up, it's an open field, then you got open fields all around at that point. It's hard to, it's hard to run up there in open field, so.
All right, thank you, Tim. No other no business, we'll move on to item number six, approve commissary proceedings from previous meetings.
Make motion approved.
I'll say.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Middle playoff.
Yes. Yes.
Item number seven, approve blanket PO. Do you have any blankets?
No, I don't either.
Looks like we have a couple blankets this week. One the top venue, five hundred dollars, B six two. One the Stigler Stone, ten thousand dollars.
Just a three.
I'll make motion to approve these blankets.
Wait a second.
Partner, Terry.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Middle playoff.
Okay, item number eight, discuss and consider relocating election board September first with following internet provisions. We have the gentleman here, he's the need to give us a rundown on what that's gonna.
Do you guys need a copy of this? You have a copy of it, I'll give it to Rhonda. Send them all your way. So we had spoken with Rhonda about moving across the street there and two things, there's two things on this quote on page three, they're front and back. On page three, the first line item is wireless bridge solution cabling. So that's gonna be to get the internet connection that you currently have here through Cross, to get that piped over there so they have that connectivity with their computers and will run their phones off of that, getting it back here to the courthouse, to the phone system itself. So that one, uh that one would have to be done in order for them to have internet connectivity to what you currently have connected here at the building with Cross. Uh and, which is, I hate to say it's kind of set up that way now, but it is. She has a connection in her building that connects back to this building. So basically we're just extending that uh through that point-to-point um or the wireless and, I'm sorry, wireless point-to-point and a cabling within the building to the actual fiscal, excuse me, fiscal machines. The phone system upgrade, um so the phone system that you currently have that, that VIP provides you is a digital phone ser- uh phone system. And in order for us to take their phones and move them off-site, they have to move in, move into what's called an IP phone. So it's running over an internet connection instead of a phone line. So if we look on the back of those phones, they're just plugged into panel telephone lines. So in order to make that transition, we have to upgrade the phone system. Uh it, it will be able to carry both the digital, so it shouldn't affect anybody else's phone in the building, uh but it will allow us to be able to then put her three phones on that. In order to do that upgrade though, we have to upgrade the whole phone system and then get the three new phones. So that's why the, the extra cost is there. So I wanted to try and help in explaining that. I've tried to explain it to Rhonda over the phone and I didn't feel like I did a very good job, so I wanna be able, sure, be able to do that in person. Uh and if you have any questions, I'm happy to do that. Um one of the other things that Rhonda did ask me to do was to compare what it would be to upgrade everyone in the uh county, I guess. And I did do that separately. If we wanted to get everybody into a new, into a new hosted scenario, we were able to, VIP, since we did this with you guys last time, uh we are providing your current dial tone, but since we did that several years ago, just this last August, we moved into a new tier. I said August, July. We moved into a new tier uh with our vendor and so we're able to actually come in and provide you seat pricing cheaper than we do your dial tone pricing. Now, you have more handsets, so there is a, it, it's, it, it sounds, it sounds better than it is. Uh you're paying twenty-five dollars a line. Now, with these seat prices that we're able to get now with our, how we've grown, it's twenty-three. So we're able to actually provide you the phone, taxes and, you guys are taxing them, but your tele- telecom fees, all of that being included, the phones are included, and it's twenty-three dollars a seat. Now you do have twenty-six phones. So it does increase the price to five ninety-eight, oops, sorry, five ninety-eight a month. Um then you'd have your faxing on top of that, so that's how it gets us to seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollar. So it's an increase in your monthly. Uh it would move everybody in the building up to a hosted IP phone system and uh everything would be done through the cloud, which is, it's, it's the next generation of technology, I guess I could say. So that's an option if you wanna do it. You do not have to do that. Uh what we do have to do in order to get the three phones over there is internet um and have the ability to connect those uh computers to that internet source and the phones as well, so it can talk back to the phone system here on site.
Mark, I got a question.
Sure.
We, we're on the IP at the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Through, through a place out in McAllister.
Okay.
And we are, we have it where if I'm not at my desk, it can still be transferred to my cellphone.
Absolutely.
Or if the electric goes out and there's no phone.
Yeah.
It automatically can be transferred to your cellphone.
Hundred percent.
Which means that if, if the electric goes out at the courthouse, they're able to transfer that very quickly to their cellphone and the county never loses, never loses service to the citizens because it transfers over.
Mm-hmm.
Uh is that the same way that this would work?
Yes, sir. And currently the, the phone lines that the county has, they are disaster routed as well to phone numbers uh currently. Uh so their phone lines do that, but it's not every individual extension like you have.
Gotcha.
It would be with this upgrade, everybody's extension would be able to do that however, however the county saw fit.
And you can even, so like through our phone, we have Reach, Reach UC. You go to that app, you type in the number, and I can sit from right here and call you and it looks like I'm calling you.
Yep, sure. And we have the same thing, but it's called Max, Max UC, same thing.
Yep.
So it gives, it gives a little bit, it, it gives you a whole lot more, I shouldn't say a little bit, it gives you a whole lot more flexibility, um especially from uh the outside world calling in, in disaster modes like that. Uh they don't feel, you don't feel that down, uh the community for sure doesn't. And we set all that up on the priest, on the front side, so that when it happens, it's an automatic trigger. You don't have to call us, which I'm sure is what the sheriff has as well. You don't have to call him. It automatically fails over to that. It's an option, absolutely. But it doesn't have to happen in order to get Rhonda's team moved over. The only thing that has to happen is to get the internet service. Now, something you could consider, I think it would be more expensive, but it's, it's totally up to your relationship with Cross. You currently have a cross connection here at the building that you're paying for. They may be willing to get you an internet connection at that temporary location for how long you're gonna be there and then you'd have just a, whatever that charge is per month and you wouldn't have to do the thirty-six seventeen that's on here.
That's what I was gonna ask you.
So you could save that thirty-six hundred dollars because literally all that is, is labor and hardware because we're gonna utilize the existing internet connection you already have. So you absolutely could take that part out and put internet over there and whatever Cross charges you for that and that's the only expense you have for internet at that building. Then we would still do, we would still need to do a little cabling on the inside as far as getting cable to the uh computers and phones, but otherwise the point-to-point hardware would go. Excuse me, go away.
Mark, I had an interview about all that equipment that's in that office that we're in now.
Absolutely.
Some of that does run the courthouse.
Some of the, some of that is connected to the courthouse, yes, absolutely. So as far as your data net, your data connections uh to the computers themselves, all of that network that's in there is talking to the courthouse back here.
And the courthouse feeds off the virus as well, so that wouldn't have to be moved.
Yeah, it would have to be moved because there's some conversations happening between both of those.
So when that building goes down, then of course the courthouse will lose.
They'll lose some connectivity.
And this is only bid you've got.
This is the only one I have.
So, but if we did the upgrade, would that, would that take care of that problem?
Yes, sir, it would because the connectivity would still be happening. We're gonna, we're gonna run that through that internet connection and cabling that we're putting in there. So you would have, you, all the connectivity would stay the same.
I'm talking about the, the stuff that's in this building that potentially will be.
Moved.
Demolished. Demolished.
Right, right.
That would be, that would be taken out and moved to another.
Absolutely. We'll take it out and move it to this other location that should, the, the temporary location and the connectivity will happen through this, so you won't lose that, you won't lose what you have now between the two because we'll move that over to the new, new site. That hardware that's in there.
Does anybody have any other question for Mark?
I'd like to ask you a question. Who, who, who provides the in- in- internet out and I'm off?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't.
I know I've got internet out there, but, but I, I, in my bill, it's automatic, it ever, it ever must have all that gray and shit.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay. I'll watch you, you guys think, but we're probably gonna need to take a little time to kind of study all of this and make a decision.
Well, we need to get some bids like wave eleven out of McAllister, we could try them just to, we need to get.
I mean it's.
Sure. I'm sure. It's bolder's money, we gotta.
Absolutely.
Do what we're supposed to do in one bid and we'll get it.
Absolutely.
We appreciate you coming and explaining.
Absolutely, anytime.
Yeah, we thank you, Mark, for coming and helping us in and.
Absolutely.
We'll be making a decision on it in the, in the future.
If you did.
So we'll, there's no action on, on item eight today. Move on to item nine, discuss the employment benefits including major medical supplemental coverage. Do we have somebody here on that? Yeah, we'll uh, we'll just skip it for now and if, if they're not here by the end of the meeting, then we'll do something. If that's all right.
Yeah.
Move on to Tim. Proven signed financial statement, footnotes for treasurer's office fiscal year ending six thirty two thousand twenty-six.
There's two there because the archi- our system generates one format and then the authors wants their own format, so that's why there's two. And then the footnote, there's just where we added, added um the new accounts for the last fiscal year.
I'll make an update for it.
One second.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Middle playoff.
Yes.
Partner, Terry.
Yes.
Item number eleven, discuss action in two thousand twenty-three, re- resolutions, do we have that? Do they, can they post the email now over or?
He didn't say anything, he was, he was. And we titled it, didn't we?
No, on the re-grant.
Yeah.
Resolution, we, yeah, we titled it last week, but I didn't know. Still hadn't got nothing on.
Haven't got the application.
No. Okay.
Table it, yeah.
Like, once we table it, then we get, come up with a resolution.
Second.
Partner, Terry.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Middle playoff.
Yes.
Item number twelve, discuss consider signing detention services for McLean-Hastle County and Oklahoma Office of Juvenile Fairness.
Anything, what do you want?
Yeah, this is our transport, how we get paid for doing juvenile transport.
Make motion approved.
All second.
Everything on here for the signature.
I don't know, I haven't seen, they usually send our district chair. I think it's the chairman decides it begin.
We got Larry Watson, huh, in the second. Larry Watson.
Yes.
Partner, Terry.
Yeah.
Middle playoff.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item number thirteen, discuss consider contract to House Cherokee next to inmates.
It's at their legal division. Um there was some changes that were made. They wanted us to um, if they brought an inmate in for ten minutes, reduce billing, this, that and the other, and we've explained to them that the way we, the way we bill is you bring an inmate to jail, it's a day. I mean that's how every inmate's billed, is if an inmate is booked into the jail, it's, it's a billing for a whole day. So um they've agreed to that. They had to send it back to their legal to get it fixed. As soon as they get it fixed, they'll send it back to us, we'll send it back to Chuck and then we'll bring, bring it back. So if we just table it for another week, it'll, hopefully they'll have it back from their legal.
Make motion to table.
I'll say.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Partner, Terry.
Yes.
Middle playoff.
Yes.
Okay, item number fourteen, discuss consider signing resolution for disposal of equipment. Was that for us, you extending?
Yeah, shake the ass. Make motion approved.
One second.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Middle playoff.
Yes.
Partner, Terry.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number fifteen, gun protraction, transfer of protraction, check received, deal three thirty.
I'll make motion.
I'm sorry.
Bill, our, bit of a second.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Middle playoff.
Yes.
Partner, Terry.
Yes.
We need to put on this. We need to get them put on the agenda.
Office guard.
And they'll, we need to call them this week and they'll know we want to be part of it. This is a class action lawsuit that I signed on to over the Oakwood, Oakwood crisis. There's been a settlement of two hundred and ninety-three million in that lawsuit. So this is um, this is the attorney general's office sending out to the agent, the people who signed on to the lawsuit. So we need to.
This time.
Yes, we need to sign that. If you sign that, you don't have time to get it before.
What are some of the ways that could be utilized, you know? General law enforcement or?
Well, I understand it go back to like drug, like the drug forfeiture account to utilize for, you know, edge like our dairy program, things like that. Now, they might open it up, but it can go to, um, to the county, I, I don't know, but I know we had to sign on to it a long time ago and it just said, I didn't know they'd already set the paperwork.
Yeah.
I think it's just this bad way.
So, partner just sign here, and then this is just saying, acknowledging that we're wanting to continue through with the process. It's not a final agreement, it's not, this, the board already allowed us to sign on months ago when we had a deal with the other, where exactly we had a, if Parker will remember, we had a special commissioner meeting in the executive session with those attorneys to discuss that and hear that.
Yeah, I remember that.
So, this is just signing the agreement that we did in that executive session.
So, partner just makes the sign today and this.
And you'll reconsider it back.
Jerry. I'm sorry to hear that Ford stopped making the Fusion in twenty twenty. And you, you, how, how many of those you have? Twenty twenties?
Yeah.
You don't have any twenty twenties? When will you have some?
I don't reckon we will.
You may have to buy one for my wife. So, you got a twenty twelve Fusion now. They're, they're smarter than I am. And I don't know what this, it is, the twenty twenty would be.
Not making them anymore.
But, but, but they're making them in twenty twenty.
They're all over with. No, they're all gone.
They're always old. Well, I'll be damned.
A couple years ago.
What's the latest model I can get on that for the wife? Seventeen?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Let's see, you've got, you've got one of your salesmen there, Reagan? Yeah, I've got, I've got my bid in with him already. He, he, he said, he said he'd let me know when he went and something came up. He'd say he had a couple of twenty twenties, but he, he had to keep those loaned for people who, who wrecked one and, and any of the insurance company and so forth. And, uh, I, I guess those are all gone now.
I, I really don't know. We may have, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's right, you can't know everything. You've got a lot of Fords there. Yeah, we just sold our house in, uh, Oregon. And I'm going to buy it for, watch the newest Ford Fusion I can find. She had, this twenty twelve, she got, couldn't even have sixty thousand on it yet. Really have a pretty good trading value, I'm sure. And, and, and that one that she drives now is smarter than I am. Guess I'm going to drive it out. Right here, right now. You can't imagine what it would be if you drive it seven more times. I get Ford make that hundred and five thousand, a hundred and five thousand dollar truck?
Yeah, I guess so.
Would it make your coffee for you too? Running five thousand, they need to do something besides dry, dry it itself or something. Well, they're making those now to dry themselves, too. Hey, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Randy is hard to find, huh? Randy, Randall, Randall.
Yeah, I couldn't get a hold of him. Any of the numbers I had, they were dead end.
Boy, I don't blame you. When, when the lady figure has said, vanished. But damn, he still represents me, and I want to see him. I mean, he, he isn't tied to a, to a, uh.
Well, he'll probably see this and he'll hear that, I bet he'll tell you.
Well, I'll tell you why. He, he, he better hear the cause. I, I want his butt. I, I want to meet the governor.
I want you to have it.
I want to meet the governor. And also, the President of the United States is a distant cousin of mine.
Huh.
Yeah.
Well, you ought to have them boys on speed dial. Oh, Biden's your cousin.
Joseph rolling that Biden, you know, he, he, he's a distant cousin. I don't think. Because, but, but he's sick.
Yes.
That man has seen her. He is. He, he is, and, and you, you can see it. I, I mean, he's, and, 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 and I want to advise him to take.
You know we're on video.
That's all right. That's all right. I, 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 that's all right. But, and it's real good.
Yeah.
On video. Yeah. I, I want Biden to know that he could be taken for allegiance, for, for his mind.
Prejudice.
Yeah.
It'll fix it?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I've been taking Prejudice for fifteen years now. I've been diagnosed with, with Alzheimer's, which I never did have. That leaves that off my show. But Prejudice may, may have, may have cured Alzheimer's. May have, and this is on, 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 on the air. Bought on three waters, it breaks me. Is it on TV, you say?
Well, on the, you can look it up on the news sentinel website. All these meetings are.
On, on the committee's channel.
Oh, it's, uh, still a news sentinel.
Yeah.
Go on the, on their website, and then you can go on the commissioner meeting, it's under MDLA.
Yeah, that's what we know so far. Yeah, I even spent five days in beautiful downtown Sydney, Australia, one time.
When you was in the military?
Yeah. Took my R and R when I was in Vietnam. Took my R and R, about five, five days of that, uh, freedom. Sure, sure went back there and married that girl.
Your wife might see this.
I've had a lot of wives. Several of them died. Yep, but, but the wife I have now, she and I have been together. And she's a Waffle Lock. You know what a Waffle Lock is? She's meaner than a rattlesnake, but she's half Pohlock and half Italian. And that woman cooks, she is one of the greatest cooks you've ever seen. And she says, you're not going to cook anything we eat now, but the first two weeks after she is here. She just sold our house in Oregon there. And, uh, going, going, going to drive down. In fact, my daughter is going up there to drive back with me. And, uh, you, you know, but, uh, she, she cooks with real Italian cheese, straight from Italy. Through, through a distributor in, uh, in Ohio. And, and these cheeses she get, they all ship them in the, uh, one time because summer. Larry, you, 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 you catch, you catch Randy. You, you're familiar with him for me.
Billy, you got a number for Randallman?
Yeah, I guess.
He got, he may have a different number than I can get for you.
Oh, you, you have a, a number for, for Randy?
Yeah.
Or per, personally?
I don't know a lot off my head.
Okay, no problem. No problem. I'll, I'll just wait for you. I was going to take off my little things, but. We don't need an executive mission, do we?
No.
No action needed on item number fifteen, item number fifteen to adjourn.
Did you just go back to that one?
Oh, yeah. That's right.
Make a motion to approve.
That was about the.
Number nine.
Insurance.
Yeah.
I yell, just. Just to table the late, time to get back on my.
Make a motion on seventeen.
I'll say. You got it, John.
Yes.